Good evening, everybody.
Hi Harvey. Hi, everybody.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, everyone.
Why does it say it wants to record? Now, six fifty-nine. Good evening, everyone. I ask everyone to put their phones on silent or vibrate at this time. It is now seven P. M. I want to welcome everyone to the East Point City Council Regular Meeting. It is August seventeenth, Tuesday, twenty twenty-one. This month is going by really fast. And we always start our meetings with our invocation led by our mayor pro tem, Sarah Lucido, and followed by our pledge of allegiance, and we ask you all to join us tonight. Ms. Lucido?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Dear God, we thank you for all the blessings you have given us. Please help us all to use our talents we possess to benefit our community. Help us work together towards the same goals, even if we travel down different paths. Help us to recognize the fact that we all inhabit this world together and that our core, we all want the same things, to live a happy life in peace with those around us. Help us to accept others without prejudice and work together with our neighbors to build a better East Point and a better world. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone who participated in the invocation as well as the pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna go into our roll call. The evening is Walton.
Good evening. Councilmember Curly.
Here in East Point.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Here in East Point.
Councilmember Lucido.
Here, East Point.
Councilmember Moore.
Here in East Point.
And Mayor Owens.
Here at East Point. Next is the approval of the agenda. Council.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would like to add to the agenda of closed session attorney-client privilege communication, and also move item B to after the, I mean, item A till after the closed session. So that would be my motion.
So you want us to, after the closed session, you want us to come back to a regular session and talk about item A?
Yes.
And I think that's supported by Councilman DeMonico. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
And Mayor Owens.
Yes. Thank you. Next is the hearing of the public. Hearing of the public is each one who participates get three minutes before and after, and we ask you to be respectful because we have people of all ages listening in. And I will give you three minutes and let you know when it's time to go, so you can get here for three, full three minutes. And the hearing of the public is now open. Ms. Walton? Let me get my clock ready. We ask you to say your name and your residency, or your name or business. You might be a visitor. Welcome all.
Mayor Tim Palazzo would like to speak.
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. My name is Tim Palazzo. I am in East Point. I am an East Point resident. I am also the current chair of the East Point Planning Commission. I was unsure of my availability for the city council meeting this evening, and so I sent an email to the city council earlier today to express my unequivocal support for the discussion of a road diet for nine mile between Beachwood and Kelly. The city of East Point Master Plan envisions nine miles as our community main street that is inviting and accessible to all persons, whether they arrive on foot, on bike, or by car. And I acknowledge that these are difficult discussions, and there are no simple solutions, but I'm confident that our community will emerge stronger as a result. The planning commission received more than five hundred responses to the public outreach survey conducted by McKenna and Associates. And I believe that response demonstrates the sincere interest in a new vision for the corridor. And in closing, I simply want to take another moment and to acknowledge and express my appreciation of and gratitude for your leadership on this issue. In my personal and professional opinion, this discussion is, is truly at the cutting edge of a, of a far broader conversation in this state and across the country about reimagining of our roadways. And so I thank you for your time and consideration, and I will make myself available for any council member who may have questions or concerns. Please feel free to contact me at your convenience, and I will yield the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your work that you do on our commission. We appreciate you. Anyone else?
I'm trying to raise my hand, but I don't know how to do it.
Raise your hand. Patricia Lewis would like to speak next.
Good evening, Ms. Lewis. How are you?
Very good. I just have a few items that I would like to bring up today. One is two doors down from me. Everybody in the city knows the address, twenty-four, eight, seventy-two, Brittany. This gentleman has been running from the city for so long. He's got, actually, a bench warrant out for his arrest now because he's not following the rules of East Point far as cleaning up his yard, an illegal pool in his backyard, illegal dogs. And I would just like to bring this to your attention. That's all.
Okay, thank you, sir. If you can email us that information, that'll be great. And the complaint that you're bringing to our attention. We appreciate that, okay?
All right.
Thank you, sir. And please keep attending the meetings. And if we don't address it, please let us know. We haven't addressed it. As a reminder. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, there's nothing in the chat, and I do not see any hands raised at this point.
I am.
See, Mr. Hoffman. Raise his hand. Good evening, Mr. Hoffman. You're on mute.
I apologize. Thank you.
Is this okay?
Hear me, okay?
Yes, please state your name and residency, or if you're a guest in the city.
Sure. My name's John Hoffman. I'm a, I'm a resident, as well as a business owner of Fusion Marketing over at Ten Mile and Gresham. Um, we're right next to the Chamber of Commerce, actually. So, uh, as far as narrowing nine mile down, I love that idea. About ten years ago, I started the, the Urban Garden on Nine Mile, as well as the Farmers Market. And that was one of the big pushes that, that we were trying to accomplish back then. Um, I love the idea of if we slow down and/or make nine mile more walkable, it's going to become more attractive to businesses that are, are walkable. Um, so we can really start to establish ourselves with a night, you know, a downtown area, so to speak, since we don't have a main street. Um, but I just found out about this a few days ago, and I wanted to come in to express my support for, uh, for, uh, you know, narrowing down, narrowing down the street. Um, I appreciate you all letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for investing your business, as well as, um, your residency here in this, in the city. And thanks for taking time off to come to the meeting. Uh, we have anyone else that would like to speak at this time?
I would. Hello?
Yes. Is that, uh, I think it's Frank. Is that you?
Yes, that's me. My name is Frank Fozzie. I'm a business owner in the city of East Point. I own four buildings on Nine Mile Road. And I am vehemently against your plan to narrow Nine Mile Road. If you conduct business on Nine Mile Road, you know how busy that traffic is. Uh, we always have emergency vehicles, ambulances, and fire trucks continuously running down Nine Mile Road during the day. Uh, there is a lot of traffic going to all the fast food restaurants on Nine Mile. I understand your concern about wanting to slow traffic down, and I think that should be done with more traffic lights because it's very, very difficult when you are trying to leave a business on Nine Mile Road and making a left turn um, with the tra, all the traffic that's, uh, that's involved. There is very, very little bike traffic, but what there is, is there is bus traffic. And especially in the morning, the bus makes frequent stops down Nine Mile. Narrowing the road will cause more traffic problems on Nine Mile with the bus traffic. Uh, I just think that it's a very short-sighted idea, and I understand you're um, wanting to make Nine Mile a better road and more, and better for businesses and walkability. But I don't think that if you look at the businesses that are on Nine Mile right now, that in essence, you would be doing them a disservice by narrowing the road instead of making it easy to get to a business. All my business is from other communities. We do not do any business, or very little business, with East Point residents. So it just makes it more difficult for me to conduct businesses. I've been on Nine Mile Road since nineteen eighty-nine. I've seen it transform, uh, to, um, you know, from less traffic to getting very, very heavy traffic, and now the traffic is heavy from midday on. Yeah, the mornings are rather light, but the afternoon, especially from three o'clock to six or seven o'clock in the, in the evening, it is very, very busy. Um, so I would hope that you would consider putting the bike lanes on Stevens, which is more an appropriate street, which has parks, and people could bu, drive their bikes leisurely without all the traffic
Thirty seconds.
and more safely. Uh, thank you for this time. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for investing your business in East Point all these years and being a part of the conversation. Anyone else like to speak at this time?
Um, there's nothing in the chat. Um, no hands are raised. I'll scroll through the images one more time. Uh, just to see if anyone was missed. I don't see anyone else, Mayor.
Okay, well, the first hearing of the public is closed. If we didn't get to you, you have a second chance, second opportunity to do it closer to the end. So thank you all who participated. Um, the first hearing of the public is now closed. Going to approval of minutes.
Yep. Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move that we approve the minutes of the special meeting for August third, two thousand twenty-one.
Support.
Motion, support. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
And Madam, and Madam Mayor, I would move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting. Same date, August third, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay.
Support.
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Please, member, Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
We have no scheduled hearings, no unfinished business. We're going straight to reports from administration, starting with our city manager, Ms. Doom. Good evening, Ms. Doom.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Uh, for those of you who've been driving on Nine Mile, you may see that we have intermittent road closures. Our public works is having to replace some piping under Nine Mile, narrowing it down to one lane, and they're cautioning people that it might be in your best interest to take another road because it is pretty snug in there, but they do have that work to do, and they'll get done as quickly as they can. Um, I'd also like to share, and in, I almost would like Ms. Holman to speak up, but I'll, I'll start at least for you. Ms. Holman, um, has been very hard at work writing grants, and we're really happy to announce that there are three winning cities in the country. East Point is one of them, and it is the mayor's, um, hold on, I've got to get it exactly right, Mayor's Innovative Design Cohort. It's a partnership between the Mayor's Innovative Project and the American Institute of Architects. And there will be a formal press release on August twenty-sixth. Uh, we will have the advantage of design assistance at no cost and five thousand dollars to assist us on looking at creating a farmer's market for us and in the city behind the potential goal is behind the library, but we'll take a look at that. So I know Ms. Holman's on, so I don't want her to be too shy, but kudos. And if you have any additional questions, you feel free to ask her, but it's pretty amazing that all the people who applied, we are just one of the three that was, and that's quite a feather in her cap. So I just wanted to share that. Um, I also received an interesting letter just about an hour ago. And it is from the niece of the former owners of Adams Furniture, um, which began in nineteen fifty-six. Adam and Rose Scamata moved from Detroit to East Point, and their furniture store started out with Adam making his own furniture by hand, and his wife Rose sewed drapes that she made by hand. And they passed away, and their son Frank took over the business, but he also passed away. So, um, Adams Furniture is no longer, you know, viable business. Their building's closed and they're for sale. But I was, uh, as, as I told their niece Teresa, I didn't know the rich history of the Adams Furniture and of the family of Adam and Rose, and I'd be honored to share it with uh, our council and our community tonight. So, um, that is quite a, that is quite an accomplishment. Sixty-five years of owning a business in East Point. And, um, the niece's niece Teresa is very hopeful, and I'll, I'll read what she said. After sixty-five years of owning a business in East Point and keeping the beautification up for the city, um, she hopes that whoever buys the property will continue to keep it in beautiful condition like her family did. So I have a special thank you for Teresa for sharing that information about her family because, as I explained to her, many of us have not been here in the last sixty-five years, and we didn't know about this. So um, that's very heartwarming, and I hope we have other businesses that will be with us that long also. And that's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we want to miss Holman to touch on that grant that we just got.
Yes, Ms. Holman, I, I'll put you on the spot and have you come on the camera and tell us a little bit more about what magic you did to be able to get us this grant over so many other communities.
Uh, really wasn't magic, um, but it, very excited. Um, I actually spoke with some of the national people, um, the week before the grant was due. Um, so what we are going to get is free architectural expertise and up to five thousand dollars for administration fees, as Ms. Doom said, um, to look at, you know, what, what can be done, what is possible, um, how we can be creative, um, and, um, excited AEW, um, is on board and excited about this project also. Um, so we can really start to explore options, um, and see what we can create. Um, it's been kind of fun. Um, building on the DIA mural, um, we had previously received a grant from the Greater Metropolitan Area Realtors, um, twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, we are working with ACDC and the DDA. Um, we are installing a garden in front of the mural and sprucing up the children's garden. So all of this is just building on that and, and seeing what we can do, um, to, to really start to bring people into the downtown area.
Oh, good. Good job. Any questions for our city manager or Ms. Holman on his grants? Moving right along to our finance director, Mr. Blom.
Mayor, I had a question not related to the grant. Can I ask?
Oh, yeah, I didn't see. I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Um, I was wondering if we could, because now it's been, uh, well, three months, I think, past the date that we approved, and it should have been done in a month. Where's the medical marijuana application process at? When are we releasing that?
Thank you for asking, Mr. DeMonico. Uh, I will turn this to our attorney. We are awaiting his final blessing. And so Mr. Albright can jump in now or give you an update with, uh, his report.
You can go to that once it's his turn, so we can stay in order. Is that okay with you, Councilman DeMonico?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So since we don't have any more questions from Ms. Doom or Ms. Holman, we're gonna go to our finance director, Mr. Blom. Good evening.
Evening, Madam Mayor and Council. A couple items tonight. Uh, the first is, September first is the due date for taxes. Um, so that is the Wednesday before Labor Day. There's a lot of people that, the way the calendars normally fall, um, they seem to think the due date is after Labor Day, but it's, it's actually September first. So they need to get in here and make their payments to avoid penalties and interest on that. So that's my public service announcement. Um, and then I don't, I'm assuming council's been informed that there was a power outage at the police department, uh, which led to a pump, a sewage pump not working, and there was some flooding in the basement. Uh, tomorrow, there will be a representative from MMRMA that will come out, assess the damage, and, uh, see what needs to be fixed and repaired. Um, so that will get taken care of, but as with all things insurance, it'll take a couple weeks. So, and that's all I have. I'll be talking enough later, so.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions for our director, uh, Ms. Councilman DeMonico?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I guess I've got one question on that last item about the flooding. How come the generator didn't kick on and I mean, we've, we've got expensive generators at all of our buildings.
There is a generator for the police department side of the building. When they built the court addition, um, it did not tie the electrical in together, so the plumbing and electrical don't connect. They're technically two separate buildings from a mechanical standpoint. The sewage pump happens to be on the court side, and is not covered by the backup generator.
Okay.
Design flaw from nineteen ninety, whatever.
Well, we didn't, I mean, but when we installed the generator, there was no way to possibly, it seems like we should have.
It was actually in before the court building was built. It's an old diesel generator from days gone by.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Director? Finance, saying I'm moving right along to our city attorney. It's Albright. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, I see Kim is still on the, uh, the Zoom, uh, meeting. Both Kim and I and our planner met, uh, through a telephone conference last Friday afternoon to go over some, uh, last minute details with regard to the, uh, application. I believe, uh, Kim should be, uh, completing her final review of it and getting it over to our office. Um, Kim, where are you in that process? Probably, probably a week away or so.
So we are waiting on the, um, updated map, um, from McKenna, as we spoke with, um, Laura Haw, um, about the distance actually being from the main or public door, uh, to the property line of the buffered use because the, the original map was not set up that way, and I believe she was going to have the GIS people try, attempt to revise the map accordingly. Um, Mr. Albright has approved the, the draft of the application. Um, we have a short list of to-dos, um, including, um, some, some different things, and, uh, working with, um, the deputy clerk and a couple, in the building official, and Mr. Albright, and gonna get this done really fast.
It's close.
Now, that updated map, is it on our web? You said it's almost done. Is the old map still on there?
Yes, Mayor. The old map is still on there, um, which actually, we're waiting for McKenna to redo the map, um, which had the ingress egress, um, planners um, in the, in their industry. They use the point from the entrance of the driveway entrance to the parking lot, so that's not accurate as based on what our ordinance says.
Right.
Um, so we, that is going to be redone. Um, but we'd hope to get the map up, at least with the language, and we will be requiring that all applicants submit a, a survey or other professional document showing that they are um, the appropriate distance from any of the buffered uses.
Okay. Ms. Doom, is there any way to take, uh, if there's some some discrepancies on a map, we should not have it on our, on our, uh, website if it's not the right thing, right? Has the right information. Why would we keep that on our website till it's updated, right?
Discrepancy is very minor. And Ms. Holman, I believe it's on the one building, unless you have found an additional one.
There are a couple of buildings, um, that are up there, and that's why, um, originally McKenna was supposed to put up a map that said that the actual measurements per the ordinance, uh, per eleven eighty-three were from the main, it was language that the council approved, I believe at the, the last meeting or the meeting before that, um, to the property line of the buffered use. Um, per our conversation on Friday, it appears that McKenna may be able to actually, uh, measure from the, the main doorways. Um, but regardless, uh, yeah, we, we need to get, we're just waiting for them to get us that information.
Okay, yeah, I just don't want, even, not even just talking about the map, anything that's had discrepancies on our website, you should take it off. Um, have more updated stuff on there. Councilwoman?
Sorry. Um, I just have one question. So, um, I know we're waiting on the map, and we've been waiting on the map now for a few weeks, but I'm wondering if we're asking for them to submit, um, a survey themselves when they, uh, submit their application? Is it even necessary to wait for the maps before we start accepting applications?
Uh, yes, agreed. We are not waiting for that, so we're finishing up the final, the final pieces, um, so we can get everything out the door.
Right, because it's going to be their responsibility to prove that they're so far away from the buffered use. So the map is just, uh, can, uh, we're just trying to be nice if people have an idea, but we don't need to supply it. So I just wanted to clarify for that.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, one of the issues, um, that was brought up by an applicant was that the ordinance says if they are listed in red on the map that they are not to be, um, considered at all. So, um, I just got that call today. I've not even had a chance to tell Mr. Albright. Uh, so that's something, just to make sure that we, we have that language so that everybody can be considered as long as you submit that, that document that shows you that you are the appropriate distance.
Right, and, and as the mayor's, you know, spoke to, if we just took the old map down that's in, not accurate, then that would not be a issue either.
Any other, uh, questions for, did you get to do your summary, Ms. Albright, as you finish?
Almost done, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I will, and members of council, I'll follow up with, uh, with Laura tomorrow afternoon to find out where she's at, uh, with regard to amending, uh, the map, and in light of tonight's, uh, closed session request, um, I do not have anything in, in addition to speak to at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for our city attorney? Okay, saying none. Moving right along to new business, the approval of Building Department Services. I'm sorry. We moved that to the bottom, so we're gonna go right along to purchase of Lucas chest compression device, council. Any discussion on this? Saying now, let's move. Saying now, let's move forward, please.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to approve the purchase of two Lucas devices in the amount of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-two cents from Skype, Skype.
Second. Anybody have any conversation on that, that you, Councilman DeMonico?
No, sorry, I think I heard Councilwoman Moore.
Okay, I thought you had a comment. Sorry about that. Okay.
Seconded, if not.
Okay, motion is supported. Please call the robe.
Councilmember Curly. Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yes.
Next item, excuse me, next item is Macomb County Habitat for Humanity proposal to purchase two flooded damaged houses. Any discussion on this, council? Let's move forward.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the sale of two flooded and distressed city-owned properties, commonly known as one-six-eight-two-six Collinson, zero-two dash fourteen dash thirty-one dash four-two-nine dash zero-one-one, and two-one-eight-five-five Normandy, zero-two dash fourteen dash thirty-two dash one-seven-nine dash zero-two-one, for a hundred dollars each, and to further authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to the sale.
I had a question on this. I'm sorry, excuse me. Now, with these houses, I asked Ms. Holman, do they previously have unpaid bills that they, we need, that needs to be paid first?
So Mayor, there is, there are costs associated with the buildings in terms of what the city paid to purchase them. But right now, the city is paying the taxes, the city is paying the water bills, no pun intended with all the water in basement, but we think it's rain-related. The biggest concern really with these properties is the cost to actually renovate them. CHN had been approved for Collinson. Their budget was a hundred and twenty thousand to, and they were buying it for a hundred dollars. A hundred and twenty thousand to completely gut and redo the structure. The issue is that, the, the bigger concern is that we do not know the cause of the basement issues and whether flooding could occur. And so Macomb County actually denied CHN's application to renovate this property because of the fact they did not want it to be turned over to a first-time home buyer if there were basement issues. The nice thing about what Habitat will be doing is that they will be in, in control of these properties at, at all times. They will use them in short-term rentals, so that should there be another basement issues, they will have the expertise on the contractors to be able to fix it. I, I, you know, when, when Macomb County brought that up about the fact that, you know, just the fact that we don't know where these issues are coming from, and, and to give that to a first-time home buyer who has gone through all the hoops and, and the counseling and, and, you know, to get a new home and then run into this problem, it, it just doesn't seem right.
Right. How long we had these homes that were ownership of, of the city?
We received Normandy last year, and the Collinson home, I believe we've had, well, they were approved in October. Most likely got that one in two thousand seventeen or eighteen.
Okay, understood. Okay.
And we, we actually have pumped that one several times, and it keeps coming back. Looks like there's some really, some grain issues in the backyard that are very serious.
Okay, thank you. Motion is support. Please call the robe.
I'm sorry, Mayor, who was the support?
I thought it was, I thought I heard somebody. It was Councilman DeMonico, was that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lucito?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Next item is discussion and possible approval of nine-mile traffic recommendation for AEW. We had a couple of our guests, our business owners, residents, speak at the hearing of the public, which helps us to decide and making decisions based on what their needs and wants are, and we listen, and it helps us with our decision-making. So, um, council, any discussion on this?
Should we hear from, I see AEW's on here about their follow-up today. I didn't quite have a chance to look through that since we received it at eight AM today. And then, of course, we had Sergeant Rhodey becoming lieutenant, and then the park, you know, the Memorial Park Building. So I haven't quite had a chance, but I see Mr. Kearns on here. If he could review that document he sent out today.
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Owens and Council. Yeah, we did send out a, I guess, an additional memorandum here this morning. And it was asked upon us to do some additional review into the road diet. If you recall from two weeks ago, we met, we were looking at reducing from a five-lane road down to three. Was asked to look at some additional countermeasures to see if we can improve the queuing and the delays that would occur if we were to reduce from a five-lane cross-section down to a three-lane. So we did look at a few different countermeasures. One was to west of Grashit, reduce it to a four-lane road, which would be one lane westbound and two lanes eastbound. We also looked at extending the designated right turn lanes to be at a distance of five hundred feet or greater. And we also looked at doing some traffic signal optimization at Nine Mile and Grashit. Nine Mile and Grashit seem to be the, the area where we are, we are seeing the most delays when we do reduce to a three-lane cross-section. So we did do some additional analysis and simulations, looking at those countermeasures. We did find that the level of service and the, the queuing definitely improved by doing some of these countermeasures. But then, it didn't, it didn't improve, you know, it's, it's still decreased versus the existing conditions at five lanes. Couple of things to consider, if, with the adding of lanes in the Grashit intersection west of Grashit, there would be issues with variable speeds and cars potentially passing those vehicles that are queuing in the through lane. It's known that cars will merge well in advance, so there still would be some significant delays with, with these countermeasures that would also increase the potential for crashes as well. So that's basically a summary of what we looked at as far as additional countermeasures. I know we met two weeks ago. We talked about some other scenarios and situations that may occur with the road diet. I know there were some concerns raised by the Department of Public Safety, as well as response times for both police station and the fire station, both being located on Nine Mile. And there were also issues raised about people, potentially more traffic going into the residential areas, trying to avoid potential traffic delays on Nine Mile. Those, those considerations still need to be considered with these countermeasures that we looked at here in today's memorandum. On that, I'll open it up to any other discussion the council might have.
Here.
Councilman.
So, Mr. Kearns, I guess, is AEW looking for direction on the amount of lanes? So I guess if we go, you know, with this latest report, you know, which certainly looks like the queue changes are much better than the other document, at least for the, the two that were very long in your first original document. Are, you basically looking for us to decide on either five lanes or this optimized three lanes? Or are there additional concerns you need to know about before going forward with the engineering plans?
I think, yeah, we're, I think we're at a point where we need to make a decision. We are getting federally dollars for the section west of Grashit to Beechwood, the western city limits. And that section has to be constructed next year. So there's a process that we have to go through with MDOT in order to get plans reviewed and approved as we're getting federally dollars. So get to that point where we need to submit for what they call a great inspection meetings, that they review our plans. Originally, we were looking at doing that in September. At this point, we would probably be looking at submitting that in October if we stick with the five-lane plan, as we have the majority of the design complete. If we look to reduce to a three- or four-lane cross-section in that area, we'd probably be looking more like a November submittal. At that point, we would be looking at an April bid letting, and I wouldn't want to go any further than that, because this is a large project that's gonna take the majority of the twenty-twenty-two construction season to construct. So, you know, it's, it's up to council as far as how they want to proceed. If we want to proceed with five-lane cross-section, replacing it in kind as it is now, or reducing it to either a three- or four-lane cross-section.
DeMonico, I think he was first, and then you, Councilman Curly. Thank you.
How, well, I guess so, I am just a little troubled, I guess, between how we, we asked McKenna to do their whole present, you know, put their whole presentation together, and we've talked about that. And now, of course, we're handing off engineering plans to you. It seems like we didn't quite meet in the middle here, and I want to make sure we at least, you know, talk about everything before we go forward regardless of what the result is. But, you know, they surveyed over five hundred, you know, over six hundred people, and feels like we haven't had that discussion with you to go forward, and now, you know, sounding like we're running out of time. So I guess I just want to make sure, I guess, we're taking advantage of this time. I know grants have deadlines and stuff, but it seems like we shouldn't have done any engineering. And so we had this discussion after McKenna did their plan, so I don't know why any plans, I guess, were already made. I don't understand that part.
Mayor Owens, could I, could I add to that or respond to Councilman DeMonico?
Yes, please. Good evening, Mr. Pangore.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman DeMonico, I think to answer your question, we were authorized to begin designing the project months before that grant was secured by McKenna to do the, the study. I, I had had several conversations with, with the city about the fact that we were, you know, we were proceeding with the design we had to in order to meet time schedules when, when that grant was pursued and when that grant was obtained. So to a certain extent, you're absolutely correct. But we were, like I indicated, we were authorized to begin, begin the work on the project long before that grant was secured for the McKenna study. And we have, we had had conversations with, with McKenna. We've had a couple of meetings with them. We have reviewed the results of that study. We're trying to incorporate as many of the recommendations and suggestions that came out of that study. That study did not, didn't, really didn't address the, the road diet issue. It talked mainly more so about street scape type improvements that would have to be pursued under another grant after the road is constructed.
Well, or authorized by who? I mean, we always authorize the engineering plans at the council table. I guess I'm confused by that now.
Well, there was, there was a time period where that was not occurring, and they were being authorized by the VPW superintendent.
Okay, all right, Councilman Curly, I think I'm good for now.
Councilman Curly.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I, I guess we'll all agree that this is another one of those eleventh-hour decisions that we have to make appears tonight, because the last meeting, we were advised by Steve Pangore that we needed to make a decision. And it saves me the decision is not should the work be done, but I think the decision is should be, should it remain a five-lane? Or should we rip up, rip up the road and end up with three lanes? I have a lot of questions, Madam Mayor, but I, I, if, if it's okay with you, I, and if George is here, I would like to hear from, from George in respect to the fire and the police department.
Okay, sounds good. Director Rohi, good evening, and Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Sage, good evening. So you both, starting with the Director. Rohi, please.
I submitted a, excuse me, I'm not feeling that well tonight. I submitted a memo a couple of weeks ago with my opinion. There's no doubt that Nine Mile needs some renovation. I think there's many things you can do, as I suggested, such as more trees and pavers and benches and pipe and music, and pave in the street, put new traffic signals. I think it would be beautiful, but my opinion is to cut it down from five lanes to three lanes or four lanes. I, I believe that's, that's gonna hinder response times. It's gonna, I look out Nine Mile every day, most of the day, and sometimes it takes me twenty minutes to pull out of the, the police parking lot, because people block the driveway. And just for example, look at those islands they put there right at Nine and Grashit, and one right in front of the police department. There's orange cones in front of them, because we've had over a dozen accidents involving drunk driving. The cars go on top of, of the island, so they remain, how they remain. But I just don't think, I mean, certainly, we don't need a bike, a bike path would not work in Nine Mile. Stevens, yes, I think that would be more advantageous, but not a nine-mile road. There's, there's double tractor trailers that, that travel that road every day, exceeding the speed limit. People are, there's road rage. They cut downs, they're gonna be cut down side streets. What about blocking the, the businesses, the ingress egress? I just see a lot of issues with reducing the lanes, but that's just my opinion. And again, I just think there's, there's a lot more things that the city can do to, to make it a beautiful street.
Thank you. Chief Sage.
Can I ask a question, Mayor, before we move on to Chief Sage?
Yes, sir.
Um, what data, Mr. Robbery, are you looking at that would indicate the response time would be lower for? Well, I guess we're mainly looking at the fire department, right? Because we've got a lot of police cars out in the neighborhood already.
Yes.
You know, it's not as dire of a need to exit the police department. And then, of course, the MedStar ambulances are throughout the city. They're not sitting at the fire department either.
Yeah, many of our police officers are in the station when they get calls, because they're dealing with prisoners or they're typing reports, or they're just in there for some general stuff. You know, it's almost, I, I consider it's almost like you're driving on the freeway, and all of a sudden, the right and left lanes are closed, especially like on seventy-five. And what, what happens at bottlenecks? At bottlenecks for, for sometimes twenty, thirty minutes. And that's my only concern. Now, you have all this traffic going east and west, and all of a sudden, now you don't have two lanes, certainly during, between four-thirty and six-thirty PM. That's gonna be an issue. There's no doubt that will be an issue.
But I don't, I mean, how do you know that you're just, like, there's no report indicating this? Because I don't, I don't believe there's anything out there that states what you're saying, though.
Well, that's my personal opinion from looking out the window ten hours a day. I, I just see what goes on. I, I, I listen to the residents. I listen to the police officers, the firefighters. I just, I just think that it, it's definitely gonna impact traffic flow. There's no doubt. When you're going from five lanes to three, I mean, there's a lot of traffic that goes up and down Nine Mile all day, and.
A W study, though, like, some of it improves traffic and some is longer, but it depends on which intersection. I mean, that's why they did this, this study.
Yeah, it's a study, but I don't necessarily agree with it. That's just my opinion. I just think that there's a lot of other things that could be done to Nine Mile Road, and maybe their study is, hopefully, it's accurate. No matter what council does, I'm, you know, I'm gonna support that, but I'm just, there's no doubt that if you go from five lanes to three, that will have an impact on, on traffic flow.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, this, this, this is a tough decision. Citizens, for the five of us, obviously, we all have our opinion, and our number one concern and one of our interests is the, is the city. Make no doubts about that. There's, there's nobody that's gonna vote tonight on this issue, because it's of greed and self, and self-gratification is for the city. But I think, you know, I think we can, when was it? Ryan spoke about, at the beginning, talked about people cutting through the neighborhood, and I think I mentioned that cup, at the last meeting, and that's probably gonna happen if we reduce it down to three lanes. He mentioned they're gonna have to take another look at the delay, particularly vehicles coming from the west, stopping at, at Grashit. There's gonna be, there's gonna be a delay there as well. But I think that, and I know I talked to Councilwoman Lucito, that we can add trees to wherever we can. That just, just mentioned, we could have a, a beautiful lighting, lighting situation. We could have landscaping. So I think, I think if we add all of that, and there's other stuff that people could brainstorm about adding to, adding to the side of the road, that Nine Mile would, would be, would be beautiful, and it would be something that, but it would attract people. But obviously, I'm, I'm, you can tell by. But obviously, I'm, I'm, you can tell by now, I'm not in favor of tearing up two lanes. As I said, I think we can, I think we, I think we can keep what we got and improve it tremendously and very, be very proud of what we got.
Um, I know, Councilman Crowe, you want to hear from Chief Sage as well. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure you guys can hear me okay.
Yes.
Um, I, I gotta reiterate a lot of the comments that Director Rohi had already mentioned. Um, and, and as far as reports go or statistics that back up, alls I could say is, you know, twenty years of experience in the fire service and the big red trucks and how traffic responds. And when we go through construction zones, when it's narrowed down and how motorists react and how it slows down the response, I think that's what we base it on. Well, I know the Director Rohi, thirty plus years in the police department. So we're just, I guess, just sharing our opinion on what we think. And it is a concern. There's an awful lot of, of north-south streets that we access off of Nine Mile, both going north and going south. Um, and then the other considerations is responding agents, agencies from neighboring communities and, and the impact of their arrival on the scene. So I think you covered most of what I would say. And I, I want to thank you all for considering our opinions on the matter.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I was going to ask Chief Sage a question, but I don't think it's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. So we heard from our, both our, our Director and our Deputy Chief and also AEW residents and business owners and also all the council. Anybody, anybody want to have anything else to say on this matter? Councilman DeMonaco?
Sure. So I guess, yeah, other than, I mean, this would be very exciting, I think, to do this. And I guess just a couple, to touch on a couple of these things we just discussed already. And then maybe just a couple of quick other things. First one is like trees or green space. If we put five lanes back in, like Councilman Curly, like where are we going to put any of that that you're talking about? I mean, the right away, I think most of Grashit to Kelly is quite small. You know, right now, it's all, it's all concrete because, you know, and there's only like a couple of feet between the sidewalk and the street right now. So I guess, um, yeah, I, I don't know how we possibly can put green space in when there is no space. And then as for studies, so I looked up studies about response times. Well, actually, I read one from, you know, our Chairman of the Planning Commission sent one. The US Department of Transportation says that road diets do not delay emergency response times. They have it as a myth in their document here, and that's the US Department of Transportation. And then just other things, I mean, like, I don't know how, you know, if we're gonna make Nine Mile, you know, better for businesses and, I mean, it's safer. Going from five to three lanes is the best thing we can do. Your pedestrians are going to be safer. Um, if anyone's biking, it'll be safer, you know, it's shorter to cross the street, all that. You know, all these things combined, it's going to be an economic benefit for sure. Every study shows that when it's a friendlier road with green space, bike lanes, whatnot. So I guess I just, I hope we consider, you know, those items. I think if we keep five lanes, I mean, frankly, it's a, not a safer road. So, um, yeah, I hope we consider all that.
All right, Ryan, when you were talking earlier about the new survey or the, the new documents that we received today, uh, I haven't had a chance to read all the way through it usually in construction. Or when we have questions for RFIs, we get longer to read them over than a few hours before and a decision is made. However, you said something about this new study showed that it would increase the amount of crashes. Can you elaborate on that?
The report does discuss the potential for increased crashes when you're reducing down from two lanes to one at, in the area of an intersection. It's known that vehicles will merge over into that through lane ahead of time. And if there's queuing taking place where you've got to wait several seconds or wait through a couple of cycles of a traffic signal, there's the potential of vehicles that may try to bypass that, that queue in the right lane that would eventually merge back into the left lane. Then you have variable speeds, people trying to speed through the light. And then there's the potential of increased crashes as people are merging back into the through lane.
And, and that was from a study, correct?
That's right. That's in the study, yes.
Okay.
Councilman Crowley.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Cardi, when you said three lanes would be safer, I, I, I don't know. I don't know if I, I don't know, you don't know for sure and I don't know for sure. But let me get, let me get over but with the trees. You said there would be no place to plant the trees. You know, we're, I'm not talking about trees that are going to be thirty or forty feet tall. I'm not even talking about trees that are going to be ten feet tall. Decorative trees typically are short ones, you know, they're not that tall. And there are areas even between Grashit and the expressway that you could put there. And there are certainly a lot of grass spaces. If, if it's only three or four feet, that's all you're going to need. If tree, if, if in fact trees is what you want, but there's other things that you could put there. And, you know, I'm not a landscape artist. I don't know, I can, I mow my grass, but that's about it, Cardi. But, you know, those questions are, are good questions, but that's, you know, I, I'm not going to micromanage where a tree should be planted or how big of a tree we should plant. We, we have experts that, that could, could do that. Just a thought.
Councilwoman.
So just to respond to Councilman Curly really quick, in AEW's first report, they did say that the, with their studying, which they did a study, would make it safer. I mean, it, it says in there that it would reduce a lot of different crashes and pedestrian accidents. So there was a study done stating that it would make it safer by doing the road.
Well, talk, sometimes, someone talk to me about pedestrian accidents. I'll, I'll ask, if they wrote the article, I'll ask Steve or Ryan, what are you talking about? It would reduce pedestrian accidents, somebody getting run over. I mean, it was in your report, Sarah said, so I'll have you answer that question. What do you, what do you mean? Ryan or Steve?
Someone from AW, please. Mr. Kern.
We really didn't do a detailed study as far as pedestrians. And we had a brief summary in there. It's as far as pedestrians. Obviously, with the, with going from five lanes to three, obviously, there's less, you have less time to get across the street. You're able to get across the street safer before the traffic signal cycles through. But we, we really did not do a detailed study as part of this. We focused only on the vehicular traffic and not necessarily on the pedestrian traffic.
Okay, so that part then, I'm gonna, I'm gonna eliminate that, that. They, now, now he explained himself, so he really didn't say that having three lanes is going to be cause less pedestrian accidents.
Any more conversation on this, Councilman?
One more thing to clear up too, I think, um, uh, Mr. Kern, when Councilwoman Moore was asking you about the follow-up report, I think there's a couple of different things maybe, and I guess I just wanted to clarify. I had proposed just a few different ideas between our last meeting because AW asked us for any feedback. So I, you probably, you should have saw my questions at the big, end of that email when they responded. But basically was, I was just trying to propose something between three and five and ask them what they thought. I was saying four lanes west of Grashit, like one lane going west and keep the two going east and still have a middle lane. And I think Mr. Curly is saying if we did that is where there's the problem from two lanes to one going westbound. I think your report, I think, says that's a bad idea, like that, you know, I just was asking because I, you know, I'm not a traffic person. And I agree then from what you said, but is, is that what you're referring to going from like two to one and that would potentially cause accidents?
Yeah, I know you were looking at the potential, yeah, and then potentially going to a three-lane section east of Grashit potentially. Yeah, that's what that's referring to.
So if it was, there wouldn't be increased accidents if it was three all the way across or five, you know, or keep it five all the way across, then, right?
It's, it's hard to say, I guess, and we really, as far as crashes. Um, you're going to see an increase in rear-end crash. Most likely, you're going to see increases in rear-end crashes, potentially head-on and T-bone crashes. Those types of accidents, you're going to see an increase and potentially if there's more vehicular delays in a three-lane cross-section.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Oh, boy. Would, would you permit me making a, a motion now?
If no one else had anything to say, we have some people that have experience, like our Public Safety Director who deals with traffic and safety each and every day, has over twenty years' experience. And we have AEW, and then we have, again, some information from the residents and things like that. They're experiencing, have a business here. So I think we have enough data, information to move forward. So please, Councilman Crowley.
Mayor Owens, can I just make one comment before Councilman Curly makes the motion?
Yes, sir, please.
I, I just want to make a clarification regarding the, the additional analysis that we did to reduce the queuing at Grashit. I want to make sure that it's very, very clear that in order to reduce that queuing, there were two things that we did to, to do that. One was we extended the right-hand turn lanes, I think as much as five hundred feet. Uh, that, that had an impact. The second was adjusting the timing on the traffic signal at Grashit. Now, that is not solely our decision. That will require input and approval from MDOT. And if, if we add more time in the signal to Nine Mile Road, then that means less time on Grashit and MDOT may not approve that. It would cause, if we improve delays on Nine Mile Road, we're going to increase delays on Grashit. So I just want to make sure that it's very clear, we, we looked at those as ways to reduce the queuing. But if MDOT does not permit the adjustment in the signal timing, then any benefits that we, we saw from the signal timing adjustments will not happen. Just to be clear.
Uh, Richard, you're, you're going to have to help me with this. Let me make the motion. I'm, I'm, I'm sure I may not say the right word, so you're the authority, so you're going to have to help me. Madam Mayor, I would move that we approve the Nine Mile Traffic Recommendation from AEW and that we remain and stay with the five lanes. Richard, is that covered or do I need to add something to it?
That would be appropriate, as long as there's a second.
Support.
Mayor, discussion before we vote.
Councilman DeMonaco.
Um, so I also wanted to mention that the, the master plan we've, you know, we worked on for many years and was approved two years ago specifically asks us to utilize road diets when capacities are ideal and talks about trying to make Nine Mile into a local business corridor. I think we'll never meet our master plan with Nine Mile as a five-lane highway as it is now. You know, it was meant to have more local businesses, be more walkable. That's in our master plan. I think if we go forward with five lanes, though, we're not following the master plan. And I think we have a big opportunity to help our businesses on Nine Mile because there's a ton of studies showing that economic benefits will be there, you know, when it's a walkable area. You know, there's, you know, some examples around like, you know, downtown Detroit's very walkable and it's very busy, you know. If anyone's been out to Utica in Macomb County or like Ferndale or Royal Oak areas, a lot of people walk around, go to various businesses. And a lot of people, if, you know, if you're meeting friends and, or family and going to a bunch of different places in town, you know, you're, you're driving there and then going to a bunch of different places. You know, I think right now Nine Mile is going to set up to drive to one place and you're going to that one place and you leave and people aren't, you know, walking around spending more money. People are leaving East Point to go spend money in other cities, and I think we have this opportunity to change that. You know, frankly, in Macomb County, there's not a lot going on. So, you know, I think it'll be very disappointing if we just do the same thing again, when we have an opportunity to do something that I think could create something better and have an opportunity is, you know, leader in Macomb County for sure. So I guess with that, I guess that's, that's all my comments.
Yes, those are some good pointers, though. When we have a master plan, we try to follow our master plan, like you said, Councilman. At the same time, we have studies, data, and we don't have the backing of our public safety. Um, we have to just go back to the plan and do it over. Or, you know, and sometimes our plans don't go through because if it creates, you know, things that are unsafe for businesses leaving our community, then you have to go back and redo the plan. But I understand, you know, we don't have the capacity that Detroit has. And I like what you said about the walkability and things like that. I want that too here. But we have to not look at what other, all the time, what other cities are doing. And we have to look at what can we, uh, look at our city as a whole and what can we adopt from another city that fits our city? And what we're trying to do is not, you know, fit for our city. So, but all the points you said were, were great. So we have a motion and we have support. Please call the roll.
Mayor, wait, can I make one more comment?
Yes, please.
Um, I did, so I did look at some surrounding fire departments also. And Harper Woods Fire Department empties out onto a one-way. So I mean, if they got to go north, they got to go around the block to go north. Uh, the, I think the two closest Detroit ones, or at least two of the closest ones are in the middle of neighborhoods. So they've got to go a few blocks before they even get to a major road. Um, St. Clair Shores has one on Greater Mac, which is three lanes, it's a middle lane and two lanes. And, um, let's see, the one over here in Warren, right by me, basically, that's on two lanes each way, which can kind of, is touched on in that US Department of Transportation. That's not usually good. It's better to have one middle lane and one lane going each way because then the emergency vehicle can take the middle lane. When you have two and two, it kind of, you know, sometimes people don't exactly get over, you know, in the right way. So I think we'd still have the best option, you know, the, probably the best setup of any of our surrounding communities even for, for our fire department.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but like our city is a little bit smaller than other cities. So we have to be more creative and innovative if we want certain things, but we make, have to make sure it's safe. And we have to take the ideas of our Public Safety Director, his experience and, and what he thinks is safe for our community. And I really acknowledge, want to acknowledge what he says and what, because we hired him for a reason. And so if it's not safe and he feels like, you know, uh, things can't be done, then we have to be creative and innovative and how smart you are and innovative and creative. I think you can get that done, Councilman DeMonaco, and find another way to make it walkable or things like that. Even in certain places in the city of Detroit, I go to the city of Detroit all the time downtown. There are not a lot of parking spaces. It's not, uh, certain places you can, um, just go to. People walk down the street to get to where they want to go. So we want to be able to, to bring people into our community that want to come to these businesses and shop and don't mind walking to it. They have to park all the way down the street. They have, you know what I'm saying? So it's just something we have to do and go back to our master plan and be more creative and innovative and look at cities that, you know, model our city and what have they done? And I look at bigger cities that have the space and the resources that we might not have in our own city. So we just have to go back to the drawing board and be more creative and innovative. And with the council we have now, I think we can do that. Anyone else? You have a motion and support? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
Councilmember Lucino?
No.
And Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Moving right along. Thank you all who have worked on this project and for your input and all the residents and business owners who have their. Thank you all who have worked on this project and for your input and all the residents and business owners who have their input. We appreciate it. Now we're going to the discussion on American Rescue Plan Fund. This was brought up by myself. And, um, I just want to know by the Director of Finance, what were some of the things that we could do as far as the city to utilize this money that has, that would have a great impact on our city financially? And help our city to grow our businesses, our children, our infrastructure, things like that. Director? Can't hear you, Director. Well. Can't hear you, even though you're, um, you're not muted, but something is not right.
How about now?
Yes, a little bit, yeah.
Interesting. Okay, I'll talk loud then.
Thank you.
Um, Ryan, can we get the presentation up? Um, first, I'd like to start off with the, um, state of Michigan received the federal funding for all cities that are less than fifty thousand population. Uh, they received three hundred, over three hundred and twenty-two million dollars on February twenty-eighth. They were supposed to have distributed that within thirty days. They requested a thirty day extension and then they requested a second thirty day extension. My guess is they are gonna ask for another one because we've received no information that the money will be arriving in the next seven days. Um, East Point will be receiving three million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars over two years. Um, and that is what we are talking about tonight. Um, first of all, on the eligible expenses, um, this is for anything March twentieth, twenty twenty or later. Um, so we could reimburse ourselves for COVID-related expenses that have been not reimbursed through other grants. Um, there are four main categories. Uh, COVID nineteen or negative in economic impact from it. Premium pay for eligible workers. Government services to the extent of the loss of revenue and investments in water, sewer and broadband. Now, before I get into the detail, I will say the allowable expenses are the same, whether it's the state of Michigan, county of Macomb, a tribal government, a big city or Little East Point. Um, so some of these are gonna be, um, not appropriate for East Point. Let's just go with that. Um, the first category is COVID nineteen or negative economic impact. Um, eligible uses include containing or mitigating COVID nineteen. Um, that is more of a county function. We have a county health department. The city of East Point does not have any uh, hospitals or anything like that within our city limits. So there's nothing that falls into that category. Same thing with behavioral healthcare needs. That is the county health department. They have funding for that. That is not a East Point type, um, of expense. Uh, they do allow payroll and benefits for public safety. Um, the fire budget alone for fiscal year twenty-one was seven point two million. Uh, the year to date last I looked was six point eight million, over six point eight million. Um, so that, you know, potentially we could claim some of the fire cost as part of this funding. Um, but for the most part, there's not much in this particular category that fits into East Point. Um, on the negative impact part, um, impacted industries are in tourism, travel and hospitality. Um, for East Point, that really would be kind of bars and restaurants. We don't have much else from a tourism, travel, hospitality standpoint. The expenses, um, that we could assist these businesses with are the safe resumption of their activities. So, um, you know, somebody was putting in, I don't know, you know, the Plexiglas separators or something like that. Um, we could assist them with some of this money to do things like that. Um, rebuilding the public sector. If we had done layoffs due to COVID and we needed to get people back into the office and, and get them started up again, we could use funding for that uh, or to replenish our unemployment trust funds. Um, we did not do that. We, we did about a two week layoff. Um, as we tried to figure out the whole COVID thing back in the spring of twenty twenty. Um, but that really isn't appropriate for us either. Um, small business loan, we can do loans, grants in kind, uh, for continuity, continuity mitigation and prevention. Um, the one thing there is the businesses would have to provide audited financials that show the pre-COVID uh, activity and then the post-COVID activity and any negative impact from that. Um, that would have to be, like I said, audited financials that prove they actually were impacted. Um, and it would have to be reviewed by, uh, the finance staff to ensure that it is accurate. Um, the bottom there, the hardest hit communities, um, investing in socioeconomic disparities and housing in communities. Um, that's, I don't know, that, that's kind of a interesting one. There would have to be a lot more research to see if anything falls within that. The only thing that came to mind for me was possibly using, uh, some of the funds for tax reversion renovations or something like that. Um, addressing disparities in education again isn't appropriate for East Point because the schools are getting their own money. Um, and we, um, we don't do education. So, um, anyways, the next category is premium pay for eligible workers. Um, as we went through contract negotiations, we actually used, um, COVID bonuses as a, uh, selling point instead of pay increases. Um, councils approved those contracts and a hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars has been uh, allocated towards the, uh, premium pay. Uh, the interesting one in the middle is we could actually provide money to private employers that are working for the city for them to give, um, bonuses to their employees. So MedStar, GFL, Merinos, those kind of people. Um, any of our local contractors. Uh, the downside is they have to, uh, comply with Davis Bacon, which is, has to do with prevailing wage rules. Um, my guess is a, a Merinos, a JJ Mish or those kind of groups are not going to be able to comply with Davis Bacon. Um, so, I mean, that's another possibility. Um, and then again, there is the workers. We don't have food production and facilities. We do have grocery stores and restaurants. So again, we could, uh, um, provide money to them, uh, three point two million wouldn't go far in those, those industries, but, uh, that is another option is to use some of this money for private businesses. Um, the big category is C, uh, government services to the extent of lost revenue. Um, there's a whole page that talks about some of the calculations. Um, but the next page, if you can get to that, is the actual calculation for the city of East Point. A little bit further, Mariah. Um, it takes our June thirtieth, twenty nineteen revenue, and this is a citywide number. It's not just general fund. Um, and then we have to calculate it out through December thirty-first of twenty twenty, so it's an eighteen month view. Um, we, so we take our base year, the government allows a four point one percent growth rate, coming up with a revised revenue number and then compares it to actual. If we do that, the revenue reduction for that first year is over four million dollars. Um, so we could take the full three point two million, call it a revenue reduction, put it into the general fund and use it for government activities. And the beauty of that one, I'll tell you right now, is that then frees up money that we would have spent on those government activities. The council can do whatever they want without any government restrictions. So I personally like that one. You guys might like it too. But, um, that is, it would use up the whole amount in the first year and then we could, uh, figure out how to spend other money in other ways. Um, so just keep that one in mind. Um, the next page is still on the revenue replacement. Um, investments in water, sewer, broadband. The water and sewer is, uh, related to, um, the big one is there is the lead service lines. We could transfer some of this money into the water sewer fund and use it for the lead service line replacement projects that we're doing. Um, we could use it to pay for, uh, a new, uh, water main replacement, something like that. Uh, so that is an allowable use of the funding. Um, the next page actually has the broadband. Uh, this is another one that doesn't really make sense. We don't have our own, uh, broadband in East Point. We have AT&T and Wow and Comcast doing that. This is geared more for, um, you know, it's a small town in upper Michigan where it's not cost effective for one of the cable companies to run fiber optic into their town. They could take their money and say, hey, let me install fiber optics and get, uh, get us up to the twenty-first century. Um, as a city, we already have that infrastructure in place. Um, the, the other thing there is we could assist households with supporting internet access. Um, however, there is a state program run through Macomb County that will actually pay for that already. So we would be duplicating a, uh, effort being handled by the county. And they have a heck of a lot more money than we do on this, uh, COVID money. But that is an option that's out there. Um, and that's, that's kind of the broad base of, of what the money can be used for. If there's any specifics, a lot of them will have to be researched to see if they would qualify. Um, but that gives you a good overview of what the funding can be used for. And we do not need to make a decision tonight. This is more of a, um, taking a look at what it could be used for, think about it, mull it over. Uh, we haven't received the money, so there's no rush on this one.
Also, any questions or anything like that? I had a question on addressing disparities in education. Now, as a city, I know you say we don't deal with education, but we, well, I'm gonna disagree with you on that one. And I don't, I hate disagreeing with the money man, but we have, uh, we do have a library that does deal with education. And so we do provide education and how can we better service our children at the library with programs? Also with our seniors because during COVID, as we saw, a lot of people needed access to the internet. So as far as education can be bring, uh, education as far as bringing people in to teach about uh, how to use, uh, so-called Facebook, uh, you know, uh, social media and things like that to our, our community, education pieces like that, things for our children. Um, also, can we also, we have a Boys and Girls Club that's looking for funding. Can we use some of this money to fund uh, that, you know, after school programs, which is also part of education? Things like that. And also dealing with the grants with the small businesses coming into, uh, that's been in here, that's been at East Point that were affected as well, doing a small grant. I don't know what council would, uh, decide on how much that grant would look like. But, uh, going back to the first question, uh, Director, uh, with the, the library and the Boys and Girls Club.
I would have to research the rules if you noticed in the package. I believe it was thirty-seven or thirty-nine pages. Um, I would have to look for that specifically. The, the library sounds probable. Um, Boys and Girls Club, I, I don't know. I'd have to research a little bit further.
Okay. Now, the grants, again, that's probably something that council would probably do as far as how much we would give each business. Is that correct?
Yeah, council will definitely need to set some, uh, criteria. Uh, it would have to be a business that existed on March twentieth of twenty twenty. Uh, so it can't be any new businesses. Um, I, I would say they'd have to be a registered business in, in the city, you know. Um, and I, I guess I also have a personal bias that I would want it to be a business that's in a commercial industrial property and not a home business. Uh, rationale on that is that a an active business and a commercial property actually increases the value of that property. A home-based business doesn't change the taxable value of a home one way or the other. But that is a personal bias of mine. Um, but council can do whatever they want with that.
So we can do a mixture of things with the education grants in the lead as well. And, um, yeah, we really want to get creative with what we can and can't do.
And, and even if your, your, uh, Boys and Girls Club didn't qualify, that's where calling it revenue replacement um, and then freeing up funds in the general fund for other services. Council could do something outside of these, um, by just saying it's revenue replacement. So there's other ways around the things that, uh, council wants to do that don't qualify.
Okay, I think, uh, another city was trying to, I don't know if they, uh, they were trying to use the, this act to, to pay for help fund the Boys and Girls Club. Like I said, it's part of education and it's a lot of, uh, during COVID, a lot of kids wasn't in school and needed something to do, and that's exactly what the Boys and Girls Club is, um, you know, doing in our, in our community and is very, is a, is a major impact. Um, so certain things like that. And I think council probably later on will look through this and we all come to an agreement of what we want to see and what we can use this money for. So, okay, move right. Thank you for this, uh, the, the, uh, presentation too. Appreciate that.
We will talk about it more in the future, so.
Yes, sir, we will.
Madam Mayor, I have one question, if you don't mind, before we end.
I'm sorry, this is your, yes, ma'am.
That, I know, because of the, I saw a screen share was up. Uh, for, for Mr. Blum. So you mentioned, like, we might be able to use someone for water sewer led place. If we did what you suggested and possibly just put it so we could use it for, uh, revenue loss and put it in our regular general fund. Um, would we be able to then transfer that money into water and sewer?
Transfer money into water sewer? You just can't take water sewer money and transfer it into general fund.
Okay, because, I mean, ultimately for me is I would love to not have any water rate increases for a couple of years and that way then all the residents of the city would benefit from it. If we could use the money for something like that, that would be something where I, where I would be heading for something, you know, my thoughts would be going because that way then every single resident that, you know, in the city of East Point would be affected positively by that.
Oh, yeah. Anybody else?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank, thank you, Madam. Um, what Sarah said is immediately thought what she suggested, um, water and sewer and with no water rates. Uh, although the other suggestions are, are good suggestions. But if we could do that, if we could work out there would be no water rates, we're affecting twelve or thirteen thousand homes. We're, we're, we're affecting almost everybody in the city rather than a small unit. It, it irrespective how important that one unit would be. If we could do something for every home, an apartment in the city, wow, wouldn't that be great? Wouldn't that be great? Good idea.
I agree. So you want to try to, um, spread the, spread the love. We definitely want to get the layup pipes done because we, we want people to drink clean water. So, I want to make sure we put, invest in our infrastructure. Um, so that's, I think that's the main priority. I think that's what I was talking about. The main priority is clean water. And then, uh, reducing people paying for water. And I think most of our water bills aren't based upon the water usage. It's on clean water. And I think a lot of people get that, uh, confused on their water bill. It's about cleaning the water and it costs money to clean the water. I sit on the board and it costs to clean for clean water. And I think that's our priority. So getting the layup pipes done, possibly using that money to, uh, decrease water, water rates and also do stuff for the community as well. So I think we have a lot of good ideas on the table and we can come back and visit this in a couple of weeks. Um, we're gonna move forward. Anybody else before I move on? I want to, Councilman? Yes, sir.
Uh, I just had a couple, well, first couple of practical questions real quick. I know we have, um, and you mentioned the about a hundred and sixty-five thousand that we set aside for, um, direct employees of the city that do emergency services. And then we just, by way of our motion on the Lucas chest compression devices, set aside another sixteen thousand. So we're looking at, you know, what, a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars roughly. Let's just call it that. Um, are there other items that we've already set? Um, are there other items that we've already set aside in the budget that, um, we're going to use this funding or are we basically looking at then the, the rest of the three millions unallocated at this moment?
Hey, your director.
Reason, I think I read your lips, but.
Yeah, the rest of it would be un- unallocated. We, we have not done anything to use it up yet.
Okay, so just those two items basically at this point, right?
Correct.
And then I think I saw in the, you know, novel that you sent us for sure, the very exciting read of the federal register. We have until the end of like twenty twenty four to actually allocate the money until twenty six then to spend it, I think is what it said.
That's correct.
Okay. So, I mean, I certainly don't want to extend it that long, but I'm saying, you know, like he said, we don't need to decide tonight for sure. And then I guess mayor, uh, just a, a couple of ideas, I guess, to throw out there. I'm certainly in support though, as multiple of you already said about lead lines. Let's get rid of those lead lines. I think certainly that would be in line with what the Congress wants us to do with the money. You know, obviously that there probably couldn't be any more important use of money than preventing, uh, you know, bad water. So I think that'd be good if we do set some of that aside. Maybe we can figure out a couple of extra projects. In terms of broadband, I was wondering if, uh, does every, uh, you know, and I don't know if Mr. Blum or city administration maybe has any idea. Does everyone have access to, I know, like, I've gotten messages from Wow recently and it, it upping my megabits per second without even paying any extra. I was at thirty, now I'm at a hundred. Does everyone have access to a hundred in East Point? I know, like, obviously we're in a giant metropolitan area, but I guess if, if we could help with that infrastructure, that seems like it would make sense too and somehow work out a deal with the broadband providers. I don't know if Mr. Blum or anyone has any idea off the top of their head.
I, I do know that the city has a hundred megabyte. I'm assuming it is citywide at this point, but I don't know that.
Okay. Um, and I think like one other thing we've talked about is like maybe, uh, something, you know, and some of these ideas, maybe Mr. Blum, you'll have to, uh, you know, fact check for me if it'd be an allowable expense. But like wifi at parks, I know we talked about that, like at the dog park, it was supposed to, you know, you're supposed to have it there. You know, maybe something like that, that'd probably be a pretty cheap project. Or maybe like, uh, solar panels, you know, for like the senior housing unit or something like that. And it helped reduce their electric bills too in the long run. You know, anything probably to invest in for the, the future, like, you know, bus shelters on Nine Mile, you know, we're again talking about, or, or anywhere in the city. You know, we obviously don't have a shelter at every, uh, bus stop. I know that we can't pave roads with the money, so I don't know if we'd be allowed to use that. Some sort of thing, is there a program we could use where, um, money could be set aside for East Point businesses, say, this is just a wild idea, uh, was discussing with, uh, Alyssa earlier. We basically, uh, residents would have, uh, I don't know if gift cards is the right word, but a certain amount of money. They could spend it East Point businesses only to allow for economic impact of businesses in East Point. You know, I'm just going to throw crazy ideas out. I don't know if we can use this money for that, but I guess just was trying to expand like our thinking on this three million. And I know water and sewer projects, I'd like to for sure set some money aside, but maybe not the entire amount. And actually, I think I like the idea of MedStar, you know, for sure. And look at some of our other vendors. I think they certainly deserve, you know, COVID pay, especially, you know, for sure EMS and maybe some of our other vendors. So I guess that's where I'm at right now. Oh, wait, one more, had one more, the, the chore program that the county does. Wondering if we could like give a stipend, because of course we've had some flooding too. That's also at the same point in time as, um, you know, COVID, you know, it's got to be rough for sure on some residents, you know. Between a pandemic and flooding, maybe the, we can do a stipend for like the chore program at the county to allow them to kind of get, you know, a deal on some work done at their house. You know, I don't know all the details of that either, but maybe that'd be some sort of, uh, potential idea. And I'm done.
All those ideas were good, Councilwoman.
Yeah, um, real quick, I'm wondering if we should, and I believe that Councilman DeMonaco may have mentioned this to me previously, about holding a public hearing, so the public has an opportunity to come out and give us their opinions on, you know, what they're concerned, what they would think would be a priority to them. Would want to do something like that?
I like a good idea, brainstorming, yeah. I think that's a good idea. Uh, can any of this money be used on the pension?
I, I, I like the, Madam Mayor, I like her idea. Anytime that we can invite the public in to an open session to give their opinion is always good. It's always, um, what's that word? What's that word that people always use where you can see through somebody? What is that word? Guys, help me out. Cardi, you know what it is. You're just making me sweat here. What is it? You know, when, when you, no, when you gotta be really honest and, and.
Transparent.
Transparent, that's it. Thank, thank you, thank, thank you, Cardi. Transparent, that's a great idea.
Mr. Blum, can we use some of this money on the pension? I know we're in a, um, we're at a little bit.
That is a expenditure that is specifically excluded from use. The federal government, actually, that is a, a very big no-no. One, one other thing, it has nothing to do with the city money, but I did want to bring up. The state has sixty five billion dollars, million, sixty five million dollars for, uh, rental assistance and utility assistance. They're managing that program also through the county. And so far, last I heard, they had only spent a little over three million of their sixty five million. So if you know anybody that's having trouble, um, with rent and utilities due to, uh, loss of jobs because of COVID, pass along the information to contact the county. I don't have a specific number, but the county is managing that particular program.
Absolutely. Thank you for saying that. I know a couple of people that's actually dealing with that and dealing with homelessness, so. Um, I'll, if you can email me that information, I'll send that over to some people that's in need.
Mayor, I sent that out, um, in an email, uh, to all of count, you and all of council, um, the end of last week, but I can send it again if you need it.
Yeah, send it. I get a whole bunch of emails, so, um, yeah, resend it. We don't have that on our, uh, Facebook or our website?
Um, I believe we did information on the website. We also shared with, um, we shared with all of residents, we have printouts, um, on the counters and then it's over at the court as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. That's, that's something important. Thank you, Mr. Blum and, um, Ms. Walton. Um, any other, and council as well. Anyone else want to speak on this before we move forward? Okay, saying now, let's go to payroll and bills.
Wait, so mayor, where are we going to set a public, uh, hearing though?
You guys want to do a hearing? Okay.
I'll motion to do that if we're.
I'll support.
Okay. What, what date? Did y'all want to set a date for that or?
I'm finding administration picking the dates. It'd just be at one of our regular meetings.
Yeah, okay. Motion is supported. Please call the row.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido? Councilmember Curly? Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next item, payroll and bills.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to pay the bills in the amount of five million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-five cents.
Support.
Motion is supported. Please call the row.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Next is the second part of the hearing of the public. You have three minutes. Please state your, your name, residency, or you're a guest. You get three minutes and I'll time you whenever you're ready to begin. Ms. Walton, do we have anyone for the hearing of the public?
It looks like Eddie and Marcy would like to speak first.
Yes, please. Good evening, Eddie and Marcy.
Good evening. Um, so first thing, um, I, I have several comments. I'll try to make them as quick as possible. I'm asking everybody, please, um, keep the people of Afghanistan in your prayers. It is just heart wrenching that, um, you know, President Biden wanted to do the right thing and the Taliban just immediately took everything over. It's just, it's heartbreaking for so many people here in the United States and abroad. So please, you know, keep them all in your prayers. And then also it looks like they're going to make some kind of announcement tomorrow in regards to booster shots. So for all of us that are fact, fully vaccinated, get ready. We got to get our, uh, boosters probably before the end of the year. I would like to thank our Fire Marshal Brian, uh, but it doesn't appear that he's part of the meeting tonight. But it looks like our deputy Fire Marshal, um, Nick Sage is on. They had a fantastic, uh, response time and, um, thank you to Director Rohib for getting ahold of him so quickly. The tenant next door decided to build an illegal fire pit. And, um, so our Fire Marshal posted a notice letting him know that it was illegal. He couldn't use it to burn anything. He wasn't home and so out of an act of defiance, a few days later, he went ahead and lit a fire anyways. He's lucky he didn't burn my garage down. When the Fire Marshal came out and saw the pit the first time, he's like, oh, that is not fifteen feet. What I would like to know is, um, Erin or, um, Elke, have you guys reached out to the resident agent to let her know about that illegal fire pit? Detective Prude came out and he even lied to Detective Prude, um, and said that he would take the pit down. The pit is still there along with all the brush, the wood and all kinds of other, um, you know, assorted messes in the backyard. It's just, it's really ridiculous looking. And of course, you know, the tenant on the other side. That, um, that huge branch still remains. One thing real quick, um, with the water department, look into all of the Great Lakes resident properties, uh, the water bills. You're going to have to go a year back on every single one of them. It's very high usage, very low water bills. And there was an illegal vote that was done in twenty twenty. I signed an affidavit, Cardi, if you remember.
I apologize. If you want to, um, email us, uh, and finish that. Cause I think it was, that's why we try to get people, uh, first in the second session, hearing of the public, if it's want to stand, um, beyond three minutes. So if you want to email us that, um, comment, you can. Is that okay with you? Ms. Eddie and Marcy, Mr. Um, Eddie and Marcy.
So, um. Wait, can, can you hear me?
I can hear you. At first I couldn't, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, because I was muted. No, I, um, I actually managed to get all the, uh, comments.
No, I was saying, your, your time is done. And can you email us the rest of your comment and we can address it? That's why we try to get people.
I, I finished my comments.
Okay, I thought you was going into something else, but you said Cardi DeMonaco. Okay, well, thank you. Okay, um, anyone else for the hearing of the public, please?
I'm going to now, Mayor. I don't see any other hands raised. I don't know if anyone, if they can't raise their hands, if they want to speak out now.
I, I do. Shelley. Good evening. I don't, I don't really have anything earth shattering, but I was listening to the, the whole Nine Mile issue. And, um, it would be nice to have walkability and everything, but I, I want to talk about some things right now, if nothing has changed, um, as far as the flow of traffic and the lanes and things like that, um, that could be done to make it a little bit nicer. I'm thinking like along the lights of curb lighting by side streets, when pedestrians are walking across those side streets at night, you can't see the, the street. You can see the beautiful lampposts that we have, and if somebody's near the lamppost, you can see them, but not in the intersection. So, and the intersections are really dark. Also, the light that's in front of the fire department, the, the traffic light. There's one right in front of the dollar store and then there's one right in front of the fire department going eastbound. I think that the one in front of the fire department can kind of block the driveway when the light turns red. So if we eliminated that, that would clear up some traffic in front of the fire department. Also, without broad, um, walkways and stuff like that, I don't think we could plant trees or anything on, on the, the grass. Because right now, when you pull up to Nine Mile off of a side street, there's really low visibility for oncoming traffic, e- especially if somebody's parked, um, curbside on Nine Mile, uh, you can't see traffic coming, so. Oh, also, the police department, both their entrance and exit are on Nine Mile. Wouldn't there be a way that, um, they could do an exit onto Grashit through a parking lot or something behind them? Just ideas. That was it.
Oh, thank you. Well, we love ideas because you live here and what you say is important to us, so thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, Mayor, I don't see anything else. There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Second part of the hearing of the public is now closed. Usually after that, we go into mayor and council reports in our closed session. So I think we're going to, uh, continue as we normally do, going to our mayor council report, going to closed session and go, uh, right ahead into what we have as item A. So, uh, starting with our mayor council reports, we're going to start with Councilman DeMonaco.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, I'll just keep it short and sweet. I'm just very disappointed that, we went forward with Nine Mile as we did. I really wish we would have taken a different route. I think, uh, be much better and more exciting for the city, but, uh, clearly we voted now and I just, just have to say I'm disappointed. Uh, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Crowley?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. Just an open question and maybe someone's answered that to me already, that the two, the two, what do you call them on Nine Mile Road on either side of Grashit? Can we legally remove those? I don't know if the state put them on there or the state gave us money to put them on there, but particularly one in front of the fire department, there's been, I don't know how many accidents that we've had. It's been so many that the people on the streets be just beside it, can't not make a left turn anymore. So if they could be removed, it would be a lot safer for the whole community. And secondly, as you know, I'm on the, uh, uh, library commission. And at each many meeting, I plead for your returnable bottles and cans. And I'm going to go one step further this time. Uh, get your pens all ready, that, uh, if you have bottles and, uh, cans that you would like to give to the library so we can buy books for the kids. I'm going to give you my telephone number, call me. And we're only four and a half square miles. I'll come and pick them up and take them to the library. So my telephone number is four eight zero, zero three five five. Four eight zero, zero three five five. Call me and I'll come pick them up gladly and congratulate you that, uh, but give me your bottles and cans. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to stress the fact that if anyone has decided not to get vaccinated, that they really should because the new variant is out there. It is much worse than it has been. We, if, if we were getting better with people getting vaccinations. However, winter is coming and it's going to come quickly. They're looking at two new, uh, variants coming up also, so. I don't know. My thing is the more people that get vaccinated, the better it will be for everyone out here. Continue to wear your mask, continue to social distance and be safe out here. That's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Proton? Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, um, this weekend is going to be the citywide yard sale. I asked the residents on the different resident pages to e-message me or email me their address. So I'm trying to compile, pile like one master list that we can post on the city website. And I plan on posting on some other, um, city resident pages and such. So if anyone out there is not on Facebook and they would like their address added to my list, if you could please email me at asklucido@eastpointcity.org, I would appreciate that and I can add you to the list because I'm going to be putting that out tomorrow. Also, um, this weekend, the library is hosting a book and media sale. So when you're out yard sailing, if you could swing by the library, they're going to be hosting that, um, on Friday from twelve to four thirty and Saturday from ten to one forty-five. They always have some really, really great deals there on books. Um, and I just want to thank everyone for their calls and comments on nine mile road. Um, I did receive numerous, um, calls, um, with people's opinions for and against it. And I understand everyone's concern with doing the lane diet. I too am also a little disappointed that we're not moving forward with their renovation, but I do understand where people's concerns were coming from. And with that, that's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, the census came out a couple of days ago. I'm very excited about the numbers, the increase of, uh, people moving into our city. It makes me actually happy and also, uh, the decrease in vacancies, vacancy has, uh, decreased as well. So I'm very excited where, uh, East Point is going. Um, more families, more businesses. And, um, we're growing and I'm happy, uh, about that. Also, the day of prayer was yesterday. We had a, a really good turnout. Um, thank you to, uh, all the pastors that came out, Bishop Boyd, who organized that with me. It was our first one right here in the city of East Point. We had Pastor Lancaster, other pastors, Pastor Freeman, uh, praying for our police and our fire. Um, we had, uh, the pastor, uh, Hemmler, I believe from St. Peters. Uh, we had, uh, a group of diverse, uh, pastors and preachers and bishops from distant, from, excuse me, from different nationalities, uh, and different religions come and pray for our city. And I was so excited. And, uh, it's, it's again, we're moving forward. And then we have a bike club that was, uh, organized by myself and a young, another young man. And, um, he's keeping it going. Uh, our second Sunday was last Sunday and for the first day was fifteen people. It went to almost thirty people. So almost double in a week. And so we are doing more residuals. We rolled through Sandler Park and most of our riding was on Stevens. So, um, I'm glad that we actually got something going. So when we do have a study on bike lanes and things like that, we actually have a bike club that is actually, you know, um, ongoing and the bike club is called Bikes in Motion. It's, we meet every Sunday at five PM at the Fresh Choice Market and, um, water, Gatorade and things are provided. Uh, we make sure you sign a disclosure form. Um, we also have connected with our public safety director, Director Rohib, to make sure that they know where we are in the, uh, different routes. So we're working on that as well. So, you know, come out, um, if you can bike with us, if you can't pray with us, still come out. We always have a new, um, idea. So I don't, I try to start organ, um, start things in the city, but I can't keep it going. Only one person. But when people, uh, bring ideas to me, I let the residents tell me what they want and what they need and what they don't have. And I, uh, take a step forward and help them get that together, but I can't run it. And I just take the, um, I take the ideas of the residents and let them, you know, empower their community themselves and I just help with that. So if you have any ideas with what you want to see in your community, any ideas in how to launch an idea or, uh, event or anything like that, and you need help from your mayor, let me know and all of council as well. And we'll help you find a resource to get it done. So, um, just connect with us by email, phone call, or come up to the, the city, um, city hall and talk to the city manager. And she'll let us know, um, how to move forward with any projects that you want to see or things you want to see done. So we're going to go move forward to our closed session.
Madam Eric, Madam Eric, would you allow us five minutes to go to the bathroom?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Need a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
For?
Motion is supported to go into closed session.
Do we need to say the reason?
Well, the reason is, um, what do you want us to say? Uh, go ahead.
Attorney, client privilege.
Motion is supported. Please call the row.
Councilmember Lucio?
Yes.
Councilmember de Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
And Councilmember Curly is gone.
Okay, he actually had to use the bathroom, but we have majority vote, so we can move on. Um, everyone that's on this, uh, zone meeting, we'll be back and talk about approval of building department services audit work plan. If you'd like to stay. If you don't like to stay, we understand. So, um, going into closed session and you all will be going into another room. Have a good evening, everyone who cannot stay. And thank you for participating in our city meeting. Well, we are back into, uh, open session and we are going to go, um, until, we didn't have a, we didn't make a motion on what we did for closed session. We just will go right into, uh, item, uh, A that we brought under, um, as the last part, right, uh, Mr. Albright? Because it wasn't, no decision made as far as our closed session.
That's right, uh, Madam Mayor. There was no action taken, uh, during closed.
Okay, thank you, sir. So we're going to go back, uh, go into item, item, that was item A, the approval of building department services audit work plan.
So Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the city of East Point building department audit work plan.
Support.
Uh, motion is support. Please call the row.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember de Monaco?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Um, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
For? Motion is support. Please call the row. Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember de Monaco?
Yes.
Me and adjourn. Everyone have a good evening. Good work, everyone. Have a good night and one.